Select Board, we all ready to go?
Motion open.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
This is JR Colby, Chairman of the Lockman. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Damon Jesperson.
Yes.
Michael Doyle.
Here.
Alicia Greco.
Yes.
Jeff Walker.
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Tracy Blaze, Town Administrator.
Yes.
Ellen Jamison, Executive Administrator.
Yes.
Chief Michael Riley, Emergency Management Director.
Yes.
We also have anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Karen Tyler, Veterans Agent.
Yes.
And John Newdile, Resident, we have John.
Yeah.
Okay, I hear you loud and clear, John, okay. Good evening, this is, this open meeting of the Newbury Board of Selectment is being conducted virtually consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, and the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been advised, directed by the Commonwealth, to suspend public gatherings and as such, Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings at a publicly accessible physical location. The order which you can find posted on the town's website allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not however ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not fit, will not feature public comment as it is not a public hearing. For this, the Board of Selectment is convening by Zoom meeting link is posted on the agenda and on the town's website. All of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on the website and we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on the website. We are now about to turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of board members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields a floor to you and be sure to state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in dialogue with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Moving on to our first item on the agenda. We have new business, public property use request, Rich Morrell, Ucan Sports LLC, Town Country Road Race, Sunday 14th, 2020, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Selectmen Jesperson.
I move to, oh, sorry, that was the wrong motion. I move to approve the, uh, Ucan Sport.
It's going to be June 14th.
June 14th, 2020, 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Sorry, I thought I had that written out.
Okay, I'll second it. And now I will go through the roll call vote. Damon Jesp, I'll go to, any comments, Damon Jesperson.
My only comment is I'm concerned about approving this when we don't know if we'll be out of the spread of the pandemic at that point. I'm very hopeful that we will be, but I don't know what contingencies we have for canceling the event. Should it, should we approve it now but not feel it's safe at that time? That's all.
Selectman Michael Doyle.
I totally agree with Jay, with what Damon just said. I will approve it, but we have to have some kind of thing, some kind of mechanism in place if the restrictions aren't listed, I don't want this happening in town.
Alicia Greco.
I'm fearful that we won't be lifted from the stay-at-home order either and I'd like to know if the, if the Chief Riley would have any comment on this.
I'll take, I'll take comments from Jeff Walker, then I'll ask the chief for some input.
Thanks.
Comment.
I actually think we'll probably be out of the stay-at-home by the 14th and where the chief is an emergency management person in place for our town. Maybe we can set up a protocol where everything falls to him to take care of the fact that we have to be out of the stay-at-home protocol for this to occur.
Chief Riley, how, how will events like the road race work if stay-at-home orders haven't been lifted?
My advice would be to, if you feel as though you, you want to approve it, to approve a contingent upon the stay-at-home and the gathering restrictions are lifted by the state. If they're not, then we wouldn't allow the event to go forward. That would be my advice to the board. Obviously, I think the organizers of the race realize that too. And participants in the race won't participate if the orders are still in effect. So I have zero issues with approving it with that contingency that if the orders aren't lifted, then we, the event is canceled or postponed until another date that the board chooses.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Damon, would you like to make an amended motion?
I move that we amend my motion to approve the public property use requested by Ucan Sport, June 14th, 2020, 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, contingent upon the lifting of the stay-at-home order by the state.
I'll second that.
All right, and I will do a roll call vote, Damon Jesperson.
Yes.
Michael Doyle.
Yes.
Alicia Greco.
I have another question, are they going to just use our roads or is this going to be a water stopper? If it was a water, so maybe this is an Ellen question. If there would be a water stop, that would be on here as well separately.
It would.
Okay, so this is just use of the roads. Then I, I vote yes, JR.
Okay, Jeff Walker.
Yes.
Okay, and Selectman JR Colby, yes. So that is approved, now we have a second public property use request, same outfit, Rich Morrell, Ucan Sports LLC, three Riverwalk 5K road races, Sundays, July 12th, 2020, August 23rd, 2020, September 27th, 2020. I assume our discussions would be very similar, so Damon, would you like to craft a similar? Unless there are any objections.
I move that we grant the public property use requested by Ucan Sport for the Riverwalk IPA 5K road races, Sunday, July 12th, 2020, August 23rd, 2020, and September 27th, 2020, contingent upon the lifting of the stay-at-home order by the governor.
Second.
Okay. So, roll call vote, Damon Jesperson.
Yes.
Michael Doyle.
Yes.
Alicia Greco.
Yes.
Jeff Walker.
Yes.
And Selectman JR Colby, yes. All right, now we will move on to our Veterans Agent, Karen Tyler, are you ready for us, Karen?
Yes, all right, well, thank you for having me, I feel like it's been a while. Glad to be here and give you guys an update on what's going on in the Veterans Office. We'll start with everybody's favorite topic. Seems like the only thing we've been talking about now, but I'll let you know what's been going on in the office during this time with the COVID-19. The Ipswich Town Hall like yours is closed to the public and so, but we're fully operational. Me and my coworker Kathy, we switch last days being in the office, but we both have access to our emails, our files, everything, you know, that's all online. We use Dropbox so we can access it anywhere, we both have our, our emails. Also on the phone if you were to call the office and there was no answer on the voicemail, it has my phone, my cellphone, so that way they could get in touch with me if, if need me and I think things have been going pretty smooth, I haven't really had any hiccups. So that's, that's a good thing. We've been doing, we did outreach, we called all of our Chapter 115 clients to see how they were doing, make sure that they had food, see if they were getting their prescriptions, so we check in with them once a week and if they, you know, there have been times that we've dropped off medications and stuff, but we use the precautions or the food and everything where we would, you know, drop it at the door and then call afterwards and say, you know, I just want you to know your prescription's out there or your food's out there, so that way they can go ahead and grab it after, you know, after we're gone. Also contacted the COAs and said, you know, if you're doing, when you're doing the wellness calls, if you could ask if the person is a veteran or a surviving spouse of a veteran to make note that, you know, either give us their contact information or give them our contact information and so that way we can just kind of track, make sure everybody, you know, is doing all right. See if there's anything that we can do to assist them. I also put together a letter that we're going to be mailing out. Just again, reiterating that, you know, that we're here, the offices, you know, that were available with everything that's going on. There might be, you know, situational changes where maybe they didn't qualify for benefits before, but if they've lost a job or something like that, they might be in need of our services, which is, you know, something that's evolving that they, you know, otherwise wouldn't, wouldn't have had to contact us in regards to like low income and things like that. Also contacted the cable to let them know that, you know, the offices that were still available were considered essential because we, because of the low-income veterans and surviving spouses with that Chapter 115 benefit and we are the ones that can determine eligibility. We're considered essential. I'm also happy to let you guys know that DVS, the Department of Veteran Services, has made accommodations on Chapter 115 to make it easier for us to get people on Chapter 115, get them approved and start getting them, you know, financial assistance right away, giving us the opportunity to do more over the phone, scan and fax and also they've been giving us, I don't know if this is too much into the weeds for you guys.
We're interested.
Okay. All day long, so, you know.
Excellent job.
Yeah. So, so anyways, so to gather, so to get on Chapter 115, there's 13 different documents that you need to get. And so, you know, usually you have to get everything prior to get an approval. Well, now they're saying that they're giving us 30 to 60 days to collect all those documents. So as long as we have a person's DD 214, which is the discharge paperwork, residency, resident, official residency, so we know, you know, what town they're living in and some sort of verification of income. We are allowed to put them into the system to start, you know, to get the ball rolling and then they said that they will support the VSOs and they'll, you know, approve it, so that way the towns do get their reimbursement. That's 75%, so it's great that they're putting the trust in us that we can, you know, move forward without having these stumbling blocks that, you know, you can't avoid, you know, that, I mean nowadays, you know, you can't, things aren't, aren't happening as quickly as, you know, as they were previously and to get that documentation. So we're on a call with the state once a week, which, you know, so we're on, so on the call is all the VSOs for the state, also the Secretary of Veteran Services, DVS and operations there, so they're doing a really great job and in fact, I hope they continue doing this. But the communication has been outstanding between us and the state, so I'm really happy about that. So also, so I also have tried, we've been trying a couple of times, but it keeps getting pushed out. But I've made arrangements or a meeting with Ethan to do PSA for, for Newberry to, I've done this before, but it's been a long time since I've done it, which is to, you know, go on cable, again, reintroduce myself, talk about Veteran Services, talk about Chapter 115. Get my contact information out there again. You know, we actually had the appointment scheduled and then COVID-19 happened. We got our first, you know, oh yeah, we're going to be opening up Town Hall again, so we're like, okay, we're going to do for, you know, April 14th and now it's May 4th and, well, may, maybe we should talk again, do it after the 18th, so. Anyways, but we do have that planned in the works once, once the opportunity comes up that we can get together. Another thing that I've been doing is, once a month, doing office hours. I had it set up in the Council on Aging, but we've spoke and, you know, and discussed maybe doing it in Town Hall instead, which I'm open to, you know, to what you guys want to do, you know, you guys know your residents and you, you know. In the other towns, I, I do it in their Council of Aging just because a lot of the people who I see are seniors, they feel comfortable at the senior center because they're familiar with it, there's transportation there, it's, so that's, that's what worked in other places, but again, I'm here, you know, I'm part of your team, so I want to do what works with you guys, you know what I mean? So just let me know how you guys would like me to handle that moving forward once everybody can kind of get out of their houses again and, you know, be able to meet people one-on-one, but right now, a lot of this stuff is being done over the phone. So I can talk about the budget. So the budget was approved, so so the district, our district, Eastern Essex, was made up of eight towns. The town of Hamilton has withdrawn from the, from the district, so now we're down to seven. And I wanted to make sure that the budgets, the assessments have stayed the same, so it has. So I made adjustments because I had provided you, because we had approved the budget before being notified that Hamilton was leaving. And so, you know, they, they had up until 60-day prior to the end of the fiscal year and they did provide that notice. So I went back and to the drawing board and looked at the budget and made adjustments so that way I could get the budget down so that there wasn't much difference. So in doing that, one of the main things, last year, I was approved for a part-time person who was great. And that was 19,600 and everything, so obviously, unfortunately, that's kind of the first thing that had to go, she wasn't there previous and even though she was a huge asset and the things that she did was, was very, very valuable, but I mean, I understand. I understand finances and I understand the budget. So she was one of the things that, that position was one of the things that had to change. So letting that go, I also reduced education, so we had conferences. Both Kathy and I used to go to the conferences, now I'm just going to go. So I cut the education piece of the budget, I also negotiated with, with the Ipswich Town Hall, we paid rent there and so I got them to reduce it by 5,000. Also spoke with them and with our, with the telephone going on to their system and stuff. So as in regards to everything that we do, you know, the website and that, we're still completely autonomous, I was just trying to be a little more creative on finding ways that, you know, we might be able to, you know, kind of piggyback on them a little bit to see if there was some savings there. And so I was able to do that, I was able to get the budget back, I was so, so close. And the difference, so with making all those changes, I was able to keep the assessment. It was just, you know, a few hundred dollars off over the, but over the overall budget. The number that I give, that I gave from previously, earlier, you know, a couple of months ago, there was a leftover of like $3,400, which we're going to use, take it out of the reserve. And so the number that I give you, which you have in your town budget is the number that you're being assessed from the district, so it's going to stay exactly the same.
Okay, thank you for all your hard work, Karen. Tough choices, working within a budget, you lose an assistant, things like that, you know. I feel your pain, some of those decisions are so tough to me. Mike.
I want to just tell the board, I, at the last meeting, I can't tell you how much I appreciate Karen. She's done an amazing job of, of this $39,000 budget gap, she's filled up nicely. She's also, she's helped in so many different ways, me personally, with the town, with the Newbury Veterans. The other thing that we, we haven't touched on was, there was a concern about disposal of the flags in the town of Newbury and I've worked out with the local Boy Scout troop and also Karen's backed me up if, if we have any extra, they will be taken care of properly, so I just wanted to tell you, thank you Karen, we appreciate you.
Yeah, and can I mention, I just had, do I have a few more minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. So I also wanted to, to bring light to, so for Veterans Day, we had a very, very successful event. The luncheon that we had was attended by over 60 people and for a first-time event like that, it, it was amazing, it was, I was really happy with the outcome. You know, we got the invitations out there and a lot of people showed up. And so this is something that I want to do for the town every year and have that be an annual thing. I think that, you know, I know that the veterans and stuff, I know that they absolutely appreciated it to, to be recognized and to have that, you know, within the town, so.
You have a commitment on that, Karen.
Yeah, excellent and everything, and so I would love the board to come next year. So we're going to do it the Sunday before Veterans Day, so that way, you know, people can, so that way, you know, people have the opportunity to, on Veterans Day, you know, they go to a parade or, or something like that. And so I think having the luncheon was, was, it was good that it was on that Sunday because people showed up, like I said.
Now, the question, oh, I'm sorry. So I don't know if you're aware of this Karen, but I'm on the fiscal, MMA Fiscal Policy Committee and one question that arose this week is, they mentioned that the DVS is holding the weekly calls with the VSOs and they were asking cities and towns to ask if there were any trends in increased Chapter 115 benefits. If, if you, they, I guess the, the DVS is expecting a spike, I don't know if you've seen a spike yet. If there, if you do see a, have you seen a spike in that, request for those benefits?
Um, so I don't know, they're not specifically, well, actually, no, one of them is specifically COVID-related. I'm talking about the district, not, I haven't had any for Newbury, but for the district. I've had, we've had three new people, one of them is COVID-related. And what happened is she, she lost her job, but she only worked there for, you know, a couple of months prior, so the, she doesn't, she didn't qualify for unemployment, so thank God for the safety net that we're able to get her on Chapter 115.
Well, if you could keep track of those, I guess the thought is if these numbers are significant across the Commonwealth, they were going to look at, they're starting to consider if any CARES Act funding can cover some of those unbudgeted claims, as long as they're COVID-19 related, so if you could just keep a side.
Yeah, absolutely, and yep, oh, you're frozen.
Yeah, we're having some problems with Alicia, can you still hear me Karen?
I can still hear you.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, yeah, we seem to, Alicia seems to be stuck.
Can I just have one more thing?
Sure.
Okay. And so, in regards to Memorial Day, um, so the flags, so we had already ordered the flags and so they're getting delivered. Because with everything going on, at least I know that I'm available, so I'm having it delivered to my office, so I'll have them there. I'm looking to, the two things, I don't want Memorial Day going without anything. So one of the things is that I do want to replace the flags and I think that I can do that, you know, about social distancing and wearing face covering and I also think that maybe, and Mike, and we kind of started talking about this and we're having another board meeting, but maybe doing like an honor roll for the cable and so that way the list of names from people from 2000 that have passed in 2019 can at least get on the public cable or something like that, so that way, you know, something's being done, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's a nice idea.
So that's kind of, those are the two things that I thought were important, but we're also, like I said, you know, with Mike and the rest of my board, that's what I brought up and I think that's kind of what we're going to be talking about at our next meeting.
Okay.
All right, now I'm done.
Well, thanks for joining, joining us tonight and thanks for all your hard work, it's a, it's a tough job and you do it quietly. Grateful for it.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome, thank everyone, thank you.
Have a good night.
I'm going to hop off.
Night.
Good night.
Okay, moving on, we have John Newdile on the agenda tonight. John, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chairman Colby, I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Okay, I am also going to recuse myself, so I'm going to turn over this duty to Chairman Jesperson.
Hello, John.
Hello.
So I think we've all read your letter, would you like to talk a little bit about what's going on?
My big thing is, is I was dealing with this with Sam before he left. And I didn't get to guys talking to any of them, I found out why I set this stuff out. And his last email to me, we were going back and forth, I was talking with the AdCom Commission and we discussed about which ones are legal, illegal, in violation, whatever you want to call it. And Sam's last was, you know, was, that would be great, the more I think about it, the more I find would potentially be in violation. Now what we're looking at is, this was all brought up because agricultural sign on Zone 97 is products raised or grown. And manure is not raised or grown, eggs are not raised or grown, they're all byproduct. And, and what we're looking at is, is I would have opted to help what the Agricultural Commission is. It could be as easy as town council saying products raised or grown, well, the product that's raised is producing a byproduct and it's fine. It's okay, it's an agricultural sign. Sam had said if my sign is just a goat for sale, it would have been fine, there's no regulation, it's all, there's another one that talks about. there's another one that talks about off premise agricultural purpose signs. That's what it was, non permanent. So it was just a wording because of products raised, products raised or grown. Now, it doesn't even affect me, but it's another one that I talked with the agricultural. The next word is principally, principally off premise. There's a lot of things. If you look at, you can go by honey. It's not raised or grown. It's produced by the animal, the, the ranger, but the honey can come from fields everywhere. It's not principally. A lot of your farm stands bring in products. They're advertising them on their sign. So the five things, agricultural signs, it's all a wording definition. So I was working with Sam on where do we go from here? And then you look at one more thing you talked about, the guide for signage for agricultural purposes. I had to ask Martha for that. Uh, nowhere on the town website. And it's just a following recommendation. And somewhere else on ninety seven, I guess somewhere, we talked about the guide for agricultural purposes sign that refers to this guy. And it can be amended from time to time by both voters of planning board. So that's basically what I'm looking at. And where do we go from here?
Martha, are you present?
I am. Yes. Hi.
Hi there. I had not heard about the ability of the planning board to amend this. So can you speak to that aspect?
Um, sure. I had a conversation with town council this afternoon. And I think there are a few things at, at play here. One is the, the description of what's actually what the agricultural sign is supposed to say. It does talk about products grown and raised. So there's, there's a semantic issue. But it also ties into our zoning bylaw, which does not allow off premises signs except for certain signs. And there is an exception for agricultural signs, but it's not just the wording here. There are some other issues. According to the agricultural sign guidelines, there are certain stipulations regarding the location of the sign and it's not supposed to be within two hundred feet of an intersection. I know that this particular sign has generally been at the intersection of, of Morgan Avenue and High Road. So I think basically this is really something that needs to come back to the, the building commissioner and have him render a decision on it. And then if the decision is something that feels that Mr. Nutile feels is not appropriate, he can appeal it to the ZBA. In the meantime, we can look at some of the potential discrepancies between these agricultural sign guidelines. And I'm not, I really don't know where they came from. I think I know when they were generated. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but just to make sure that there is consistency between our sign by law and this, which is essentially incorporated by reference. So does that make sense? So I think it's really not, not something that, that is for you all. It's something that really needs to go through the building commissioner and potentially to the ZBA. And the planning board can take a look at it at the appropriate time. It would be, if there's a change to the bylaw, that would have to be done at town meeting.
Okay.
If I can say one thing, this is an important thing for me with this sign down here. I don't really, it was just helpful. I'm more looking at this on, at the agricultural commission, that there's a lot of signs in violation. If this, if we look at these regulations, then how can we fix that? And if my sign is included in it, that's true also. But if it's, you know, I look at, my big one is on the signage, agricultural purpose, the guy, it makes the following recommendation. Recommendations. It doesn't say it's the law that it says it can't be down the end of ionization section. And I'm just not sure. That's why I think it needs to be clarified a lot. And that's what I'm looking to do for everybody on the agricultural side.
Yes.
And that's, if you're at least listening and understand where I'm at on this.
Well, I think you've raised some very good points, John. I'm going to ask my board if they have any comments. And, um, and then we'll go from there. So Alicia, do you have anything you'd like to add to this discussion at this point?
I think if the, if the bylaws conflict with regulations, I think that really needs to be addressed, cleaned up.
Uh, Mr. Walker?
I, um, I think agricultural signs are probably pretty important. And if the language can be made to include most things that have to do with the agricultural process, I think that would be certainly okay with me. Certainly having signs in areas that are dangerous is a whole nother part of the equation.
And I also want to add that, you know, we are an agricultural community. So I do want to, you know, support all of the farms. And, you know, if, if it does need a look at, like I said, looking at the regs and the, and the, the by, the bylaws that that needs to be addressed, I think, to support the agricultural community.
Yes.
Um, I think there's one more.
Go ahead, John.
Agricultural. There's a lot of things, agricorism. Yeah, sunflower field, hayride. There's a lot I'm not covered even now on the agricultural side. I'm not sure. Uh, this was all we talked with Sam. Spent a little. I know that's somewhere in a museum, but they put that rain down at the end of the street. So it's, there's a lot of things that when, Sam said when this original bylaw, he thought it was originally done for Iron Moon when they had that sign. We'll definitely remember that. And that's why it never got into byproducts or anything like that.
Yeah. I think you've raised some very good points. I think you should continue to talk to the building inspector or commissioner about, about the bylaw. And I don't know if under the current bylaw, we can make, if he can find a way to grant your petition. But I think you've raised some really good points and I hope that we can get the bylaw changed to reflect the reality of our, our farms, which is that they, as you said, have a lot of byproducts, eggs, honey, some products that are coming from other locations. Because I think we do want to support our farmers and support their livelihoods. The town council has laid out the process that would have to be followed, which is a further conversation with the building inspector. Then you could potentially appeal it to the ZBA, but I think what makes more sense is to work with the new building inspector and craft a bylaw that better reflects what we need to, to have an accurate bylaw regarding farm signs. I know that doesn't give you immediate relief right now, but.
I mean, with everybody at home right now, I don't need to sign down the end of the street. I'm sorry to say, or it's good to say, but I mean, I really don't need it. This was just more of a carry on. I added it these days. The more carry on because those issues on being a member of the agricultural commission to try to strike it out get everybody in compliance with like.
Yes. Well, I think the board, it sounds to me is very supportive of, of changing this bylaw and making it, it work for everyone. And I appreciate you taking the time to look at it and figure out what's wrong with it. And if you need support from the board, I'd be happy to help you work on this moving forward.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sean.
All righty. I'm out. Bye now.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Damon.
My pleasure.
Now we'll move on. We have a commercial plant permit application for the 2020 season. Fred Hoistrat had some address issues which he has corrected. So he seems to be clear for his commercial plant permit application.
I moved to, oh, sorry.
I, I just want to see if we have any comments from the board. I'll do a roll call. Damon Jesperson comments.
No comments. I think this has been, he's resubmitted, paid his late fee and should be allowed to have his permit.
Mike Doyle.
Totally agree with the selectman Jesperson.
Alicia Greco.
I agree.
Okay, Jeff Walker.
Yep, Fred's come into compliance with what we have already on the books and absolutely let Fred have his license.
Okay. And I'm in agreement with that. He's taken the steps he needed to. Okay, so now a roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion?
Yes, Damon, thank you.
I move to approve the commercial clam permit application for the 2020 season of Fred. Of course, we had thirty five old rally road and also the chair can execute the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, roll call. Damon Jesperson, are you in favor?
Yes.
Um, Mike Doyle, are you in favor?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, are you in favor?
Yes.
Jeff Walker, are you in favor?
Yes.
And JR Colby, I'm in favor. Yes.
Move on.
So that's down. Okay, we're going to move to the approval of the Kavanaugh conservation restriction at two fifty four Middle Road. So I am going to recuse myself from this decision and turn it over to Vice Chairman Jesperson.
All right. I'm going to read the motion prepared and then call for discussion after we get a second presumably. I move to approve the conservation restriction from Sarah H. Kavanaugh and Jeanette M. Vannen. I don't know the last name. Gnoe, trustees of and acting as such on behalf of the Paul D. Kavanaugh Trust, UDT dated April thirteenth, nineteen eighty four, as amended with the address of two fifty four Middle Road, BICOFMATH oh one nine two two to the Essex County Greenbelt Association, Inc., in the public interest pursuant to sections thirty one to thirty three of chapter one eighty four of the laws of Massachusetts. And as the chair can execute the document on behalf of the board.
Second.
Uh, discussion. Selectman Doyle.
I approve. No discussion.
Uh, selectwoman Greco.
Nope, I'm in favor of this. This no comment.
Selectman Walker?
I'm good.
All right.
May I ask a question?
Uh, no, I think the chairman has said no public comment at, at this meeting. JR, can you confirm that we're not taking public comment right now?
We're not.
I'm sorry, Leslie. Uh, that, that's how the, the meeting is structured right now. Okay, roll call, vote. Selectman Doyle?
Yes, please.
Selectwoman Greco?
Yes.
Selectman Walker?
Yes.
Selectman Jesperson, yes. Turn it back over to you, Chairman Colby.
Thank you, Damon. Now we have the protection fire company number one lease agreement. Would you like to just give us a little overview on it, Tracy?
Uh, yes. This agreement is expiring as of June thirtieth. As you know, protection company number one has, is the owner of the property. They, they built the station and have manned it for many, many years. Since we have moved to a strong chief form of operation, the fire company has leased that facility and some of their owned equipment to the town of Newbury. So this is a renewal of that lease. And they are renewing at ten thousand dollars less than we had previous paid per, per year. So our new, our new fee is seventy thousand. It used to be eighty thousand annually.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to make a motion. We can move into discussion. I move to approve lease agreement between the town of Newbury and fire protection company number one dated April twenty eighth, twenty twenty. And also that the chair can execute the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, now we'll move to discussion. Damon Jesperson.
Always nice when a lease payment is reduced.
Yes.
Okay, Mike Doyle.
Totally agree.
Alicia Greco.
I have no comment.
Uh, Jeff Walker.
All good.
Okay, I also approve of this. So we will do a roll call vote. Damon Jesperson.
I approve.
Michael Doyle.
Yes.
Alicia Greco.
Yes.
Jeff Walker.
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. Okay, now moving on. I have a discussion about citizens' concerns and correspondence on the agenda, especially in the circumstances we're in now, in COVID nineteen and having to deal with all of this stuff electronically. I'll just kick off the conversation. Concerns me about, about this, having citizens' concerns during this time.
I lost audio totally. Can you repeat what you said?
Okay, I'll start over. Are you, can you hear me good now?
I can hear now. I lost all the audio.
All right, I'll, I'll start over again for you. I wanted to have a discussion tonight about citizens' concerns and correspondence on the agenda, you know, especially during this time where we're dealing with things during Zoom meetings. One thing that concerns me is open meeting law where governors guidance grants us some breathing room to not take public comment and things unless it's a public hearing. My concern is if we get into citizens' concerns during these times, it's great for people that are tech savvy. If you're like myself and you're not tech savvy, you might not necessarily have access to the meeting like someone who's tech savvy would. Another thing that concerns me is getting into conversations that aren't on the agenda. And I know Steve Manchin was well intentioned at our last meeting. But he asked to appear on the agenda. And he kind of wanted to kick the door open to discuss Warren articles for town meeting. And the proper time for that discussion would be when we're discussing Warren articles for town meeting, not two weeks prior. When I feel the selectmen focused on the agenda at hand, they don't have all the materials in front of them, you know, for the discussion. And it's a, it's an opportunity for off the cuff comments. And, you know, scenarios to get set up. I think it's a better process for the time being. There's five selectmen. I think most people in town know one, one of us. If not, they know someone who knows one of us. It seems to be a healthier process if townspeople contact a selectman. And if their issue has merit, they can be put on the agenda, much like Mr. Nutile was tonight. I thought that was a great way, even though I had recused myself, I thought it was a great way to handle the issue. He asked to be on the agenda for discussion. Everyone had time to prepare. And you folks had a productive discussion. But I also don't, you know, I don't want this to be one sided. I just want to kind of shed a little light on why I'm thinking the way I'm thinking because it's, it's just, it's odd, you know, someone can bring up town meeting Warren articles, but if somebody isn't tuned in because it wasn't on the agenda or they can't log in to participate properly, that's not giving them any justice. And it's also putting the selectmen in precarious position of violating open meeting law because again, Governor Baker didn't grant us immunity to the open meeting law. They granted us ways to deal with this situation and how not to violate the meeting law. And I would like to open this discussion to the other selectmen. And I'll just go down the list. Damon, what are your thoughts on this?
I certainly understand the concerns that you've expressed around access and, and also bringing up items that were, are not on the agenda for discussion and that is, and how that could be a violation of open meeting law. I certainly don't want to end up inadvertently doing that. I do have some concerns about making sure everyone knows how to reach us, how to contact us and keep the communication open during this time, especially when we're not. Especially when we're not seeing uh, each other as regularly face to face as we have in the past. So I guess my, my desire is that people reach out to us electronically so that communication can continue to happen.
Uh, Mike Doyle.
My concerns have been for six weeks, we haven't dealt with this issue, okay? And we've had letters we could discuss. We've had issues we could discuss, but they have not been discussed. An example, tonight I called the town administrator. Um, I did not realize the conservation commissioner was out on sick leave. The secretary for the building commissioner, and I think he, she works the dug too.
Mike, Mike, I just want to caution your personal information about employees. Just be careful.
I'm, I'm just telling, it's like I said, but we have people unavailable to work. We have people that want meetings to happen and meetings haven't happened in for a month. This is unacceptable. People have to have move on, well, septic systems. People have to move on about things. And I think that we should, we have to have it happen. Um, I want, one of the things I've asked for, a lot of my things don't get put on the agenda. One of the things I've asked for.
You, I have not, Mike, Mike.
Let me just finish, let me just finish jamming. One of the things I've asked for, I would like to have weekly updates from Chief Riley, from Tracy Blaze about what's happening in the town of Newbury. I don't know how many people are sick. I have not been spoken to by anybody in the town of Newbury except for Tracy Blaze today for two weeks. I'm sorry, but that doesn't work as a selectman when I'm trying to answer people's questions and concerns. Okay, we have to have a weekly meeting. We have to have a weekly update. We have.
We're talking, Mike, Mike, we're talking about citizens' concerns.
This is a citizen's.
Correspondence.
I'm getting from people. JR, I'm getting people's concerns all day long. I've got six emails today from citizens because I talk to the people of Newbury. Okay, they aren't happy with the communications of this town right now. And I think if you look at Amesbury, we have a communications director who meets every two, two days in the town with, on Facebook or something, but we do not do that. And I'm sorry, but I'm saying the communications in this town right now are terrible. I'm done.
Uh, Alicia Greco, how do you feel about handling this in this time?
Well, I, I, I strongly believe that the board of selectmen is, um, our meetings are not meetings with the public. They're meetings with each other in public. And that's a big difference than a public hearing in meetings with the public because it's ripe for open meeting law violations like Warren articles and other items that aren't on the agenda that somehow get discussed and deliberated on in true innocence. It's ripe for mistakes. I would like to go back to the coffee hours that we had. I know right now we can't because there's a stay at home order, but, um, I liked rotating once, um, once a month and meeting with everyone and we had a piece of paper and then, and then items got brought back to the board. I think that worked. I think when we moved, um, that might have gotten an obstacle, but at least we were open and we were available. I, I think, Mike, I think if you having people, um, ask you questions and you don't have answers to them. Um, we do have a town administrator form of government. I would just forward all those questions to the town administrator. And then, um, and copy the chairman and he'll make sure that the constituents are, are.
I will stop doing that, okay? Right away.
Mike, Mike, I gotta recognize you.
I'm sorry.
Have you completed your comments?
Yeah, and the only other thing I want to say is, um, is that, um, Ellen, uh, if this is the road we're gonna go on, you're gonna have to triage a lot more calls and, and, you know, more than happy to forward them on to, to us, to me anyways. I'm more than happy to take emails that you forward to me and, and, um, phone messages. But I think that to be more, I think to stay within the open meeting law, not only during this difficult time of COVID-19, but when it does go away, which quite frankly, I don't see for quite some time. I think we're gonna have a new normal. Um, I think that we could have meetings again with social distancing and everything else when it comes up. Maybe we're gonna have to wear masks, who knows, uh, and meet with the public that way. And then the agenda items can be brought to the chair and if the chair chooses to put them on the agenda, then that's how they can be brought forward. That's how, those are my feelings.
Uh, Jeff, what are your feelings on the topic?
Alicia actually stated most of the high points and she did a good job with that and so did most of the others. Citizens' concerns, I've been a chair before. And citizens' concerns were always sometimes hard, but to be honest with you, citizens' concerns have changed in our town. They've just become, I mean, they've become different. I mean, I've been around politics a long time and most of the time now, some of the citizens' concerns really should be looked at in a different light. They should be on the agenda or they should be brought to, uh, like the town administrator because they are bordering on open meeting law. They're discussing things that people would like to know about and they might not be at an open meeting that we're having or they might not be on these type of Zoom meetings. But during the time of covert, I definitely don't think with certain people not being on the phone, certain people not being in a Zoom meeting, certain people not even knowing what's going on, that to really discuss some of the things that aren't on the agenda don't make much sense.
Okay, um, I'm gonna ask just for a straw vote tonight on, um, I'm gonna make a motion.
Excuse me?
To continue handling citizens' correspondence. Actually, let's talk about correspondence.
Ray.
Mike, I will get, I will get back to you, please.
For a vote?
Um, now how about correspondence? I want to go through everybody again. It seems odd to read through every line of every piece of correspondence we get. Cause here again, today's world is full of ways to express yourself. Uh, there's the newspaper editorials, opinion pieces. Everyone has their own, so, most people have their own social media page. I'm not one of them. I'm not a tech person. There are at least three Newbury social media groups going. There are many, many ways for people to express themselves and at times, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the correspond.
I can't hear Chairman Colby.
But, um, a lot of the correspondence is on point, but there's also correspondence that we get over and over and over again from the same couple people that just turns to beating the dog to death and sometimes, you know, such dissenting views, um, not just from my own, but from reality or from the data or facts. I don't want those words coming out of my mouth, reading the correspondence at this table because I don't want someone flipping through the channels to think those are my words or my thoughts when they're not. And I'd like to go through the board to see how do you feel about like reading every bit of correspondence allowed at every meeting? Is it necessary? I mean, there are other towns that don't do citizens' concerns like Georgetown. I don't believe Raleigh does citizens' concerns. That was before this.
I can't hear you, Colby, I can't hear you.
Can you let us have a conversation, Mike?
I can't hear you. You keep cutting out.
Um, so Damon, what do you feel about the correspondence and handling that?
Um, I don't believe that we need to read the, every word of the correspondence. I think sometimes there are pieces that are worth highlighting, you know, we, we have had the fellow who's doing the algae removal from the pond. I think, you know, highlighting some of the information that he's bringing to us is nice on occasion. I think the other thing that we could do is when citizens write in a correspondence that has potential action ramifications for the town. We could, after noting the correspondence, discuss whether or not we want to bring that up at a future meeting for discussion. Um, but I don't feel that there's any need, and in fact, I think there's, it would make meetings drag incredibly to read word for word the correspondence. So I think it, it is at present up to the chair to decide what is read. And I think that is an appropriate responsibility for the chair to have. Um, the only thing that I might change, as I said, is when elements relate to future actions that the board may take, we may want to discuss after the correspondence if we want to discuss that at a future meeting.
Okay, uh, Mike Doyle.
I want everyone to look at this letter. It was received on March 20th. I received it on April 10th. It was from the town of Hamilton. It was about a meeting that Hamilton left our district as far as, um, I received it 20 days later. This is not acceptable. I talked to, uh, Tracy, let me finish, let me finish. Let me finish. This is about correspondence. This is a correspondence letter.
Correspondence from citizens, Mike. Do you have comments?
This is a citizen. This is a citizen of the Hamilton, for God's sakes. Will you listen to me? So I talked to Tracy. I said to her, why? And she said, because I'm the only one here. I offered today to go into the town of Newbury to separate the mail on a everyday basis because our secretary is not there. I will do that and I will do that every.
Losing Mike. Oh, Mike's frozen. Okay, Alicia Greco, do you have comments about how we should handle correspondence from citizens?
I personally don't think that anything should be on the agenda that we're not, we don't need to discuss or make action on, move on, do something with it. I think that it can, the correspondence can come as part of our agenda like Ellen does currently and, and we can see it and we can read it. But unless we need to do something with it, uh, I, I don't think it should be read as part of the record. Now, like you said, if there's something, um, like the, the gentleman that does the pond at the, at the, on the green and, you know, if there's gonna be rate changes coming up, like the Comcast letters that we get, uh, different channels and that kind of stuff. I mean, we can do, um, a bullet point, short succinct bulleted comments as to what correspondence that we got and how it affects the townspeople. Other than that, as far, and as far as correspondence letters go, I mean, there's email. People should email. I don't know, I would, I would, uh, hope that the town of, um, Hamilton would also have emailed the town of Newbury a letter besides snail mail in 2020. I don't know what the, um, circumstances of that were, but to just send, drop a letter in the mail in today's day and age, especially knowing that governments are shut down and not working and stay at home places are in order at a state level. That's just, these are extenuating circumstances and that to me, that's just not acceptable on, on, by the sender's part. But I don't know if I answered your question, but I, I feel as if that, if there's something that the agenda should only include items that we need to vote on, um, or discuss, then that's it.
All right, thank you for your comments, Alicia. Uh, Jeff, how do you feel about handling a citizens' correspondence at this time?
Well, I think correspondence that comes from certain entities can affect the town, which is a base that's been discussed before, could become part of the agenda if it's relevant to something that is needful to know. Anything else that is sent to us becomes a public record. And if someone wants to have something on the agenda, sending a letter to, you know, our secretary is, is a good way to try to approach that too, either by if we ever have coffee meetings, getting hold of a selectman or if we move to, um, you know, have them send something and ask to be put on the agenda. I think that's what most other towns do and I have no problem with that. Cause it becomes public record anyway. If anyone wants to read it, they can certainly read it.
And, uh, I mean, I still plan to acknowledge correspondence like we have been, but I think much like Alicia said, you know, bullet points, points of the letter as far as reciting everything word for word. It just doesn't seem necessary. Um, they'll be the odd thing that we do. But it's, it's, uh, it seems a better process if the citizens reach out to the selectmen, things get put on the agenda. Rather than, you know, the, the pattern that's developed to citizens' concerns. You just kick the door down and force a conversation. You want to have one, you want to have it. You know, whether people are prepared or not. It's a, it forces everyone into a tough.
And JR, I just want to be clear about what I said about succinct bulleted points. That's only if they're pertinent and they're important to pass a message on. I don't think every letter that we get should be bulleted and discussed. I think that's a mistake. I think that, um, I think that we just need to be more mindful of what's on the agenda and keep focused on the need at hand to go through an agenda.
Okay. All right, I think, I don't even know if we really need to take a vote on this, but it's, it's a conversation I wanted to have and I'm glad we had it. So thank you for that, everyone. Um, town administrators, oh, sorry, uh, Chief Riley, Emergency Management Director, are you ready? Sorry, I had to catch you off guard.
Oh, no problem, certainly. Um, first I want to apologize to the board. I didn't realize communication was an issue. Um, I'm more than glad.
Excuse me, Chief, I'm sorry, my hand was raised before we left. Chairman Colby, my hand was raised. How do you want me to deal with this?
Mike, can you please mute yourself where?
My hand was raised to talk about the last thing.
We're trying to have an update from our Emergency Management Director.
But we had, we hadn't finished the conversation. My hand was raised. What's wrong with you?
Can we hear from our Emergency Management Director?
Can we finish the conversation before?
Can you please, can you please mute yourself, your auto order at this point? All right, Chief Riley.
My apologies. Like I was saying.
So we can get some emergency management information to the people.
Um, I'm, if, I realize I just found out tonight that communication was an issue. If I realized that, I'd be more forward. I thought updating the selectmen at the meetings was appropriate, but I am more than.
Communication has not been an issue. You folks are fantastic. We don't need to mire down our emergency management people's time with daily meetings to kowtow to selectmen. You've been doing a fine job. And I expect you to continue to do it the way you've been doing it.
I appreciate that. Um, I will be more than glad to put together a.
I disagree.
Please mute yourself, Mike.
No.
Weekly newsletter to keep the board updated. Uh, I have no issues with that at all. As far as the COVID emergency goes in town, we've had an uptick in cases in the last two days. We've had two new reported cases. Our caseload in Newbury is still very low. I'm, I'm happy to report that, uh, we are at six cases townwide. That, those numbers are updated every day at four o'clock on the Department of Public Health website. And up until yesterday or today, we were listed as below five cases. And if they're below five cases, the Department of Public Health just lists it as that. Now they'll be listing actual numbers because we've unfortunately gone above five, but still, uh, we're very low compared to other towns around. As far as the beach goes, last weekend was better, but the weather was a little bit worse. The parking measures we put in place seemed to work, uh, where the guys are out there enforcing ticketing and towing cars, uh, for people that are violating. And this weekend is projecting to be a nicer weekend and I will have people assigned out there specifically for the enforcement. The business owners out there have been fantastic in helping us out. All the business owners out of it, yeah. Out there have been fantastic in helping us out and helping out with the parking situation. They understand. And they also understand that the more strict we are with this, the quicker we get through it. So that, that's their hope. That's my hope. I'm hoping these regulations are lifted in the next few weeks and we can get back to a normal summer. Would be nice, but, um, other than that, we're holding daily public safety meetings with the department heads, uh, figuring out what they need. PPE, personal protective equipment was a, an issue last week and through MEMA, we secured more personal protective equipment, which was distributed to the fire and police departments. Hand sanitizer was an issue. I, MEMA was very thorough in getting us plenty of hand sanitizer. I distributed that to the library, the highway barn and town hall today. So we're working very diligently with the town administrator for town hall, getting town hall prepped for hopefully bringing employees back at some point in the near future. And that, those are discussions between. future, and that those are discussions between the board and the Board of Health and the governor's office as to when we can start bringing people back in. And, you know, as far as the public goes, letting the public back in the building, I don't see that happening for a while. We're still right in the crux of the real heavy point of this, and once that starts to wane, then I'm sure the governor will think about lifting some restrictions, but I don't see that happening for a few weeks. And hopefully, we're not going to get an uptick like a lot of other countries are seeing. Hopefully, our measures will keep, keep the recurrence of this once it subsides for the summer, keep it from coming back, but we'll see. And as far as everything else goes, daily public safety conference calls, daily calls with MEMA, daily calls with Department of Public Health, Boards of Health, and we're trying to see, coordinating with Newbury Port, but we share the island with Newbury Port, you know, what they're doing out there. Did have some conversations with Realtors about short-term rentals and Airbnbs, and those are, those are not allowed under the governor's guidance. So, so the Realtors have been pretty good about that. And I know that's their business, and I hate to tell somebody that they can't conduct their business. I mean, it's livelihood, but those, those are the rules, Airbnbs and short-term rentals, unless they're COVID-19 related, housing essential workers, housing, you know, first responders that have been exposed, we can't have those. And we also got guidance today from the state about boat ramps and boat launches, and it's good news, people will still be allowed to launch their boats, but boat rentals and kayak rentals will be disallowed until these restrictions are lifted. And then I've had conversation with Riverfront Marine about their, their policies for when boats do go back into water, the social distancing and what they have in place, and I was very impressed. It was a very thorough policy that they put together.
Excuse me, Chief. Mike Doyle, can you please mute yourself? Your ice cubes are taking over the meeting.
I'm sorry, Jay.
So that's, that's where we stand right now. I will gladly put together a weekly bulleted newsletter for the board to review. That's not an issue at all, unless anyone has any questions, I'll answer any questions you have.
I'd like to, we will go to questions. I just want to thank you and Deb Rogers, a health agent, Tracy Blaze, for all working together so diligently. I feel as leaders, the best thing we can do is step out of your way. We don't need to set up additional hurdles, deadlines to meet and things like this. You've all been doing a fantastic job. I thank you. I will now go through the board with any questions. Damon Jesposon, do you have any questions for Chief Riley?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Mike Doyle, do you have any questions for Chief Riley?
If he asked a question, I didn't hear it.
Yeah, I'm not hearing it either.
Maybe get back to him.
See if his connection comes back. Alicia, any questions for Emergency Management Director, Chief Mike Riley?
I do, Mike. When, with the boat launches, are they gonna have, I know, I mean, I know people are gonna be, I hope people are gonna be allowed to launch their boat and spend the day on their boat at sea and in the river and stuff, but what about on the docks? Are they able to, you know, I know, I mean, I boated in the past, but I know what docking on the docks is like, and it's difficult to socially distance. I don't know what the, what's going to be considered allowable.
I know the governor's guidance is there's no, there's no dock partying allowed, only family members on your boat. Only people whose boat is registered can operate the boat. And I know Riverfront's policy that I read was they're not allowing any docks or grill, any dock boxes or grills or anything on the docks. They don't want people congregating. They just want people to go to their boats and, and use the boat and not use the docks and the slips as a social gathering point, and they'll have employees that police that. And one of the other things, boat tie-ups, and I know a lot of, in the, in the Sound and Backtowards Ipswich, there's a lot of boat tie-ups, and those things where people congregate and they, they enjoy it, and it's really fun, but that's not going to be allowed until the restrictions are lifted either. So the harbor masters out there will be enforcing that, unfortunately.
So you're talking about like the backside of Crane's Beach?
Yes, yeah, where everybody ties up.
Yeah.
Those things will be disallowed until the restrictions, and so we'll, we'll be looking at that between Rowley, Ipswich, and our harbor master will be enforcing that, and yeah, that's, that's it for the boats.
Thank you.
Walker, any questions for Emergency Management Director, Chief Mike Riley?
No, Mike, thanks for doing the good work, and I'm glad that state realizes that boating is a good way to social distance, hopefully.
Well, the next thing would be to take away motorcycles, and that would be on...
Yeah, now you're really pushing it.
Just saying.
Okay, Mike Doyle, do...
My, my, my audio went, I'm sorry, Chief.
Oh, no problem.
Can we please have a every three-day update, so I don't find out about what's happening in the town of Newbury on Facebook?
Um, I'll do whatever the board wants me to do.
Just send me, if you want it. If they don't want it, I want a three-day update. What's going on? What's happening? And what's the latest count? I have had no communications for two weeks, and I've had it.
Actually, can I, excuse me, Mike, it's, I want to speak up.
Alicia, you may.
Thank you. Mike, have you been on the Massachusetts Department of Public Health website? Because there's a wealth of information on there, tells you...
Alicia, I want to stay on the Newbury website. I have, I have my concerns with Newbury, Massachusetts, and I work 36 hours a week, and I have three days a week to deal with it, and I have not had any access to anyone in this board.
So I'm just curious as to what, what, what is your expectation?
I want to know...
Of the chief and the town administrator?
How many are sick? I want to know when the parking's being happening. I want to know what's allowed. I want to know, I want to be in, I want to be in the end.
Okay, so, and I'm sorry if I'm over speaking here, but you can find out how many people are sick every day at four o'clock by logging on to the...
Alicia, I don't have that kind of time right now. I'm working 40 hours a week.
As am I, and I also am able to log on every evening and see what that is.
As a, as an elected official, we can be sent the information every two days. What's wrong with that?
I personally, I mean, the chair can have this conversation, but I personally think that's a little bit too much to ask of our, of our EMA to report back to us, the town administrator?
We have elected officials of the town.
That's true, but we have a town administrator, form of government, and she should be the go-to person, she and the chief, as the EM, is the emergency management person, they need to, the information needs to come from the town administrator. If she feels as if there's information that we need to know, she can pass that on. I don't believe they would close the beaches without notifying us.
Tracy Blaze was not elected. I was elected. Let me decide what's appropriate.
That's not our form of government. Okay, Jay, I'm gonna stop.
I think as we've seen on a national stage, it's important to let our experts in their fields handle their departments, and that is the model. I think us interfering or imposing deadlines in things on them, I mean, really for what? It's like, as Alicia said, it's information that's easily accessible.
But Jay, we're the people that are asked by the, by the elected official, by the elected people. We get asked all the time. You may not be, but I'm asked all the time, what's going on in Newbury?
I think we all have people reach out to us, Mike. It's...
Okay, but my... I give my praises.
And, and everyone has their own sources for information and information stream. For the most part, I think the board works together well. So any other comments on the topic?
Actually, I do have one, one question. If, and Mike, and Tracy, this isn't a question for you both. If the situation on the island with the beaches deteriorates and a decision is made to close the beaches, I know we don't want to do that, what, what would that, how would that decision look? How would you come about that decision?
Well, because we share beaches, my opinion, because we share beaches with Newbury Port, it would be a joint decision between Newbury and Newbury Port. And the beaches are either open or they're closed. So unfortunately, if the beaches are closed, we'll have somebody on the beach to enforce that, and if anyone's out on the beach, we'll have them kicked off the beach.
But Mike, no, my question is, sorry, my question is, how is that decision going to be, be made? Like, was that something that you guys would, at your normal daily meetings or your weekly meetings, you would assess it? I mean...
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Every day we discuss what happened the day before and, you know, how we can improve and what we can do. After this weekend, it's going to be nice weather, so this will be a good barometer. After this weekend, we will sit down, we'll go over what happened, what was good, what was bad, what needs to be improved, and if it's to a point where we can't control it and control the social gathering and the public safety, then I rely on Deb and the Board of Health to render an opinion. Then I'd, I'd talk to Tracy, and she would talk to the board, render opinion, then I'd make a decision. But it's nothing like I would sit in an office and unilaterally do anything. All the, all the discussions and the proper discussions and the people, there's a big picture to everything. I mean, you have people right on the beach and telling them they can't go out their back door, that's a very difficult decision to make.
Right.
So yeah, nothing's made in a vacuum. We have to look at the big picture on everything. It's a discussion we have with the officials in Newbury Port, there'd be a discussion we have with town administrator, the health officials, and the Board of Selectmen would all be involved, and we'd come to a consensus, and I would give you my opinion, I would tell you what we're going to do, and I would have absolute backup for everything, and I'd feel comfortable before we made a decision like that, because that's a huge decision.
Yes, it's a big one.
Never get to, but it would be a collective collaborative decision. It wouldn't be just made in a vacuum.
Great. And I'm just curious, I was down the island, I took a ride down there last weekend because I was curious to see what it was like. What, what's the bathroom situation like there? Are the porta-potties there, Tracy?
They are not there, no. They don't go until Memorial Day.
I didn't think I saw them there. So these people that are coming out there, they can't even go to a restaurant to go to the bathroom, so...
They're supposed to be, they're not supposed to be making a day of it on the beach. The governor's guidance is...
Right.
Go take a walk on the beach, use it in a transitory manner, take a walk for an hour or so and leave. And, you know, that, that's what we're shooting for.
Yeah, well, until the weather gets warm. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mike.
Do you have a quick comment, Mike Doyle?
Yeah, real quick, Chief. We should be informed daily before I find out in Facebook that something's happened. Just let us, we're not going to let people park on the beach. Just send me a note, because I'm not getting that note.
Well, Selectman Doyle, during this conversation, it went from weekly to every three days to every two days, now daily. I don't know what you're...
Anytime, Chief. Every two days, fine, every two days from now on. Send me an email every two days, period.
Whatever you want.
Thank you.
All right, you're doing an excellent job, Chief Riley, and thank you for everything you do.
Jay.
And just focus on the job at hand. Yes?
One quick, and obviously Tracy and the chief, and I know our board knows too, and everyone that is involved, we do have a little bit of a different situation, obviously, Plum Island, because some of Plum Island is, is basically a private beach, it's privately owned property, so it always is a little hotter on Plum Island. So that's one thing we have, you know, we can control parking and things, but it's a little hard where people actually control to, you know, mean low water, because we're a low water state, one of the five low water states, so nothing's easy.
No, that's what makes it...
The upper beaches, you know, with the Neasements and everything, we can control, but the, from, from the center down is hot.
Yeah, it's a funny deal, isn't it?
Makes it difficult to control dogs on the beach, old people, you know?
But that makes it, just one more thing, so I just thought I'd say that.
All right, thank you, Chief Riley.
Thank you.
Tracy Blaze, do we have an administrator's report tonight?
Sure. We are now moving into our sixth week of uncertainty, as we're calling it here. I'm certainly not surprised, but I am really impressed with how many, or how so many of our employees are really stepping up to keep the municipal operation running. It has not been easy with the remote work schedule and the flexible schedule and having different people come in at different times. It's somewhat disjointed, but everyone's doing the best they can, and I appreciate everyone's patience. Selectman Doyle, I am happy to answer any questions or any concerns. Shoot me an email, call me. I always respond to your emails. If there's something in particular that you're interested in learning about, I'm happy to guide you through that or provide whatever documentation that you require, just ask. The governor, everybody knows now that the governor has announced an extension of the stay-at-home advisory through May 18th, and that is for non-essential workers. We here in our municipal operation are considered essential workers, but until the time of the 18th, the municipal offices at the library and the council on aging will remain closed to the public. And I'll be meeting tomorrow, I think it's tomorrow afternoon, I'll be meeting with the health agent, Deb Rogers, and Chief Riley to review with them the phased reopening plan that I'm working on, and to get their advice, really, and input on the various aspects of that plan with an eye towards making sure that it's, it's going to be a safe reopening. I expect to roll out additional guidance to the managers by the end of this week. In addition to the reopening plan, working on the reopening plan, the IT director will be scheduling Zoom training. I believe it's going to be held this Monday, and with the various boards and committees in the hopes of getting them all back to their regular meeting schedules, albeit, you know, virtual meetings, but they'll all be able to resume their meetings in May. The town clerk reports to me earlier, reported to me earlier today that she has already received over 840 requests for early voting ballots, so the message is definitely getting out, and those requests have been fulfilled and the ballot sent out to the residents. So given the large number of people who have already requested them and the fact that these votes all have to be counted at the polling location the night of the election, it seems like it is making more and more sense to possibly consider a reduction in the polling hours based on the town clerk's recommendation. I think you've got that on your agenda for our next meeting to discuss, so we'll have updated numbers so you can see where we are at that point. Wanted to again remind everyone, a lot of the town's business can be conducted, conducted on the website. We'll encourage that for the time being. Right now, a lot of my focus is budget contingency planning, and I do expect that the pandemic will have an impact on both the 2020 and the 2021 budgets. The state, based on our weekly calls, the state is about four weeks behind on development of their budget, so we will evolve ours as we get more information from them. Town meeting, which has been rescheduled for June 9th, everybody has to be aware that there is a possibility that we may not be allowed to congregate in such large numbers by that date. So we're going to have to consider some, potentially, we're going to have to consider some alternatives. You know, maybe we could talk about possibly combining the annual and the special town meetings, or if we want to hold it earlier, maybe you hold it in an alternative venue. We have town meeting on Mantra Field, I'm just throwing ideas out. But we'll have to take our guidance from the governor as far as lifting the stay-at-home orders and determining whether or not we're going to be able to meet on the 9th, but just so everybody's thinking about that. I do expect that we have the potential to face some deficits at the end of this fiscal year, and we have all, the managers have been advised repeatedly by Chief Riley to keep track of all the COVID-19-related expenses for future, future federal and state reimbursements. So everybody's very conscious of that and is... So everybody's very conscious of that and is keeping a close eye on their expenses. Just wanted to update you on the conservation agent search status. We are going to be conducting virtual interviews. Right now, the office is currently unmanned. So we do, you know, that that's right now, that's the only office that we have a lag in as far as responses to emails and voicemails. But everybody's pitching in. Martha has graciously reviewed all of the emails. Susan Neitz is taking some of them and addressing them as she served in that role previously. So we're trying to get caught up, but there is a lag in the conservation office right now. I have had a conversation with the co-chairman, Ben Gehagen, and he is working with us now. And the hope is that they can hold their meeting again virtually in May and start addressing some of these issues. The street light conversion project is finally complete. So we expect or we hope to save about $60,000 a year in our energy costs along with some, you know, light fixtures being much more efficient and improving visibility. So that's done. And finally, you know, I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank the residents of Newbury for being so very patient with all of us. Not only patient, cooperative and and responsible in the way they've paid very strict attention to social distancing and the other guidance that we've been provided by the state throughout the pandemic. So it from from my perspective, it is very sincerely appreciated. That's for tonight.
Hey, thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
JR, can I ask a question before we move on from this? Thank you. Tracy, what is the, what is the pandemic going to do to the DPW and their road pavement plans?
As a matter of fact, we are still proceeding with our bid opening, which is happening on Thursday. So that is moving forward. You know, we'll, we'll have the bids in hand. And when, you know, the governor and the chief say you can go, we'll be ready to go. So everything will be in place to move forward.
Okay, so because they can't ride in the same vehicle, that's not social distancing.
No, they're still working full time. They're doing a lot of sanitizing for our offices since everybody's, you know, working each day. So they've kind of shifted some of their focus. And they are doing right now a lot of tree work. But they're paying very careful attention. They're not having their, you know, their coffee times together in the in the DPW barn. They're being very, very conscientious as it relates to the distancing rules.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alicia. Mike Doyle?
Quick question. With calm, calm down, is there any way we can keep, keep things moving instead of waiting a month?
Um, I don't have the authority to act as the conservation agent. My conversations with Ben Gehagen, who is the co-chair, I think the plan is to have the meeting in May. And within, hopefully, the next two weeks, we'll complete all of our interviews and potentially have to get someone on board sooner rather than, you know, the end of the fiscal year as we had projected.
But we, we have some simple conservation things that could be answered. Is there nobody that can answer these things right now?
Tracy is working with the conservation.
Thank you, JR.
Mission to figure these things out. We're in a funny time, we're in a period of flux.
Things have to go on, though.
Um, things are going on. And quite frankly, as I mentioned earlier, I'm very impressed with the way the managers have kept ahead of everything. The only backlog we have is in one function of government, and it's due to the fact that someone is out of the office temporarily and someone else left for another job.
Right, we lost, we lost Sam, we lost Jennifer, we lost Doug. It's tough.
They all went to, one retired and two went to.
I know, but it's.
Again, these, Mike, Mike, these people are employees. We shouldn't discuss their personal details.
I'm discussing, I'm discussing moving things on, JR.
And we all got that answer. I think the only one that doesn't understand it right now is you, Mike.
I know that.
So if we can move on.
JR, JR, quick question. A lot of these covert has slowed down the ability to interview people for that position, too.
Right, and and we're still moving forward and actively working on it. Things aren't going to be perfect all the time. Moving on to correspondence. We got a letter, 326, 2020, from Deborah L. Colton from the Community Call to Action Against Anti-Semitism Committee. They had an event that has been canceled. It was at the Prince House on Wednesday, May 6th. That event has been canceled. And they also have a Tuesday, May 9th event that has been canceled. They will notify folks when the events are rescheduled. We had an email from Kyle Moss regarding trash. She's another resident of Caldwell Way, called, rather, and the DPW, the police have been notified about littering in the neighborhood. We got correspondence from Xfinity regarding programming changes. Starting May 5th, 2020, Clio will move from the digital preferred tier to the expanded basic tier in the entertainment genre pack, making it available, available to more customers. On May 13th, 2020, the sports entertainment package will be renamed. And on or before June, June 30th, 2020, ESPN goal line and basis loaded plan to terminate service. And now the channel is currently dormant as there are no games expected to be played. So any meeting up, does anyone have any meeting updates?
Karen from the veterans handled mine nicely.
I was, I had a scheduled meeting of the Fiscal Policy Subcommittee at the MMA today, but that didn't happen. Everything, they've been sending emails out, but there hasn't been any meetings because of COVID.
Okay, thank you. We have meeting minutes, has everyone reviewed the meeting minutes?
Yes.
Motion to approve. April 14th, 2020, meeting minute?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Damon Jesposon?
Aye.
Michael Doyle?
Aye.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes?
Motion to sign warrant?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll do, we'll do the roll call. Damon Jesposon?
Yes.
Michael Doyle?
Aye.
Alicia Greco?
Yes, but I wanted to give the town administrator, actually, can I amend that? I mean, how are we gonna sign them?
I would sign them on the board's behalf, like we've been handling some other stuff.
Okay.
The vote.
Yes.
Okay, and Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And I dig through my stuff here, I would entertain.
You didn't make your, you didn't make your vote for the warrant.
JR Colby, yes. Thank you. I would now entertain a motion to close public meeting and move to executive session.
Second. I moved pursuant to GLC, the A, section 21A, to the board move into executive session to discuss contract negotiations with non union personnel, namely, the town administrator and the fire chief and collective bargaining with the Department of Public Works.
Okay, Tracy, would you like to give us the procedure for moving from one meeting to another here?
I'll be ending this meeting when you vote to adjourn. And then I will send you a new link that you can tap into the executive section.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.